Good evening, everyone. We're gonna go kinda call this order and we're just going to do a roll call right now for everyone that's present. Just say your name. Miss, I'll start with me, but no, at the table, yes. Kristy?
Yes?
Riley.
Benita Seals.
Donnie Seymour.
Dr. Quaid.
Pat Cassup.
Rick Moore.
Jim Smith.
All right, we're all present. Kalinda is here.
Kalinda.
Kalinda.
Yes, Kalinda.
But neither, okay.
I'm Beverly.
We're gonna stand and Rick's gonna leave us with a prayer and a pledge.
Father, thank you so much for this day you've given us and thank for the blessings that we're receiving from it. We ask blessings upon every person here and the families they represent. Father, we're thankful for the writing that you have sent and ask that you would continue to send us some. We thank for Buck and his experience and knowledge and the goodness he's done for this city. As we grow the business and boundary with this council, we ask that you would give us wisdom, you'd give us knowledge and patience that we might be making decisions that's good for the whole city and every person in it. I pray that you hear your name. Amen. It's gonna be a little different today as we come to a pledge for the Texas flag.
Can we be the regular pledge?
Okay. For the Texas flag. Our pledge is allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We don't have any special presentation. At this time, we're gonna give the public the opportunity to address the council. Dialogue, deliberation, or discussion with council members on items that are not on the agenda is prohibited by law. Time for your speaker is limited to three minutes. Okay, moving on then. We'll hear updates from the mayor and council members on activities of community interest. I'll be back here next time for that. This is a new format we're using, so we're all...
If you have any, it's a place as hell for you.
So maybe you can bring up the new sentence off the lady there.
Oh, I see, the version of the entire community events. Yes. I see.
Yeah, you go.
Well, no, we did. I know if you have to play basketball or not, so you know, keep them in your mind as they drive out. They're playing against current, so they didn't rank them. It's their first playoff game, the boys will follow up probably next week. You know, if the girls continue to play, they'll probably play Tuesday. So we sent them off with the town came together and then sent them all off like they usually do. Very cool to see. And that's really it, stuff for best week forward for the F A festival. And that doesn't look a big deal for us in the town and that for Greg's team. Also, business of the year, citizen of the year were determined last night at the chamber meeting. The banquet is the 27th, so if you were interested in going to the chamber banquet, sign up and you can go back. So another community event that's going on that you highly recommend by a team, so you can get involved in what's going on.
Are there any updates on the dog park?
I've actually been speaking with Laura and she's got everything prepared. She just needed to, she planned on being here yesterday and now her name was canceled and she couldn't be here today.
We'll put our agenda from the front.
Yes, and she was, I talked to Kristy and maybe she said, "Then you get everything over to Buck." And I didn't know what the procedure was from that, so.
Yeah, she could come visit with Buck and just give him an update. And then if she wants to come for everybody, she could be there. So people like to hear from her. Okay, good, so, awesome. Okay, council will review the minutes and approve for February 3rd, 2020.
We got Mayor Melo reviewing this again.
I already gave her that change and then there was one other where we made a motion and he seconded, so she's aware of that as well. Under the rule of fire protection contract proportion. Yeah, so I already told her those two counts. But other than that, that's all that's on, so I agree with those things. So at this point, we'll move for the consent agenda. City council may consider taking action to block off Park Avenue between 7th and 8th Street. Oh, we didn't approve the... We can motion that we approved the minutes from February 3rd with that change extension. Do you have a second? You ready?
Yeah, sir.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now we'll move on to consent agenda. City council may consider taking action to block off Park Avenue between 7th and 8th Street from April 24th to the 25th for the chili cook-off. City council may discuss, consider, and authorize the submitting of a grant with Texas Forest Services for Equipment, turnout year six sets, S C B A two for the fire department. Also, change of days and time open for the recycle center.
If I may add, it's not gonna be coming on the street closure. I would say more Broadway to 8th Street, closing off all of your traffic around there. We'll still keep the hotel available. It'll be on this side of the hotel, so it'd be a little bit past 7th Street, not much. Probably two hundred, yeah, I'd say from the alley for Albury Road back to 8th Street.
The fire equipment, that's outside of budget, is that what's being proposed in this consent agenda? Can I make a motion to move that outside of consent agenda? I make that motion.
One second. The, what were the determinations for the stop?
Well, on Sundays, Sundays were everything about three people, two at the most, two at the three. And we got a guy working down there, Sunday. And I think if we made it move it, do it, Thursday from like 10:00 a.m. to 5:00, then Friday, Saturday, four days. It wouldn't have a two-hour search time for the week. I think we'd have more people on Thursday after noon and Thursday after noon to do it.
There have been some questions, there have been people...
Some of these things are so...
They weren't able to get there the hours it's open now.
Okay.
And they were wanting more hours to make it through.
Well, they're making almost a full day's Thursday, but we don't actually, don't be 10 to 5, it's one half today, Thursday. Two hours for the time.
Yeah, I spoke with today, you said it does, two hours, two or three hours on Sunday.
Yeah, I got, I mean, I have papers every week, it's open, they show us. Every once in a while we get five people, most times it's two or three.
But on Saturday, or Friday, Saturday, it's between, we need to 10 to 15.
At the end of the week, people start kind of being in there, okay, we get all those stuff, so.
So we're open Thursday...
From 10 to 5.
10 to 5.
Yeah, Friday, Saturday, normal.
And Sunday?
It's in your packet, yeah. Friday's at 5, Saturday's at 5.
There's one issue running off too.
Yes, sir.
As somebody that uses it, I would suggest hour going into the evening past 5:00. Or moving, if you're not gonna do that, spacing it out to where there's something at the beginning of the week versus it being Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Like having it be open Monday, Friday, Saturday, or Tuesday, Friday, Saturday, spreading it out.
I think at this point, we would have to, I mean, it's budgeted for a certain amount at this point, right? So we can run this direction for now until we get to the next budget and look at it from that point on.
Yeah, keep an account and come here and...
Right, you can give it an account on Thursday and then you can...
And you should be open full time, five days a week.
Yeah, but it wouldn't be...
And I'm not saying additional hours, I'm just making a suggestion of maybe spreading it out.
Start an hour later and keep open on...
So, so do we want to approve it as it is now currently and then at the next budget meeting we can revisit? Yes.
We need to approve the consent agenda.
Right, okay, we remove one down, but, okay, so do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? I made that motion. Do you have a second?
Yeah, I'll...
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Rick. Okay, city council may discuss, consider, and take action on new hires in the street department with C D O license. Is that going to be executed or...
If you, if they have to, if they... We can move it any of the executive anytime we want, but...
Well, we'll do it when... I'll put this right here, no matter what, anyway, I want to do it. It's just something that we need to...
Let's do executive for a second.
Do you see a motion?
I make a motion that we go into executive to discuss.
Hundred percent.
Seven point one.
Seven point one.
Nine zero seven.
And there... Wait, wait, yeah, it won't be long. It doesn't look that way yet. Thank you for being patient with us, guys. Okay, so we're going... So we're gonna take action on the new hires in the street department with the C D O license. So do I have a motion to approve? Make a motion that we approve the hiring of Bobby Knight and Jessamine Manning for the street department. Do I have a second?
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, city council may consider an ordinance extending health insurance benefits for city employee retirees to the T M L health benefit pool.
Has this kind of something been done in the past or is it new? Trying to go along with the trial and do it?
It's new, it's revenue new, it doesn't cost anything. It expands your pool, however, and you're expanding your pool with some of your foes, so your loss ratio may be different. That's the only thing that I considered would cost you.
So is this basically Cobra?
Yes.
For people who no longer work for the city?
Yes.
Okay, so they're, they're bearing the burden, the full financial burden. We don't pay for anything, right?
That's correct. However...
However?
They're added to your pool, so your loss ratio for your entity will, may or may not go up. They're older folks, so.
Loss ratio means what in layman's terms?
Well, just in every health insurance situation, especially in commercial health insurance, they look at you as a client and what you've cost them. We're part of the pool, so it's the overall pool, but they're still gonna look at us, you know? It's wonderful that you guys became part of the T M L pool, because it's very hard to get in. A lot of places with higher loss ratios can't get in it, so you've done a good thing being part of the pool.
It says on the orders, we even meant clear that we're paying for our retirees coming.
Yes.
That's what I'm trying to do to make sure of is we will be paying.
Yes.
But your insurance costs in the future could go up.
Yeah.
Right.
What's the average age of our retirees this month, Steve?
I don't know.
I don't know.
Well, having said that, we don't even know who's gonna take part with this, right? I mean...
No, we don't, because they may not choose to.
Why is this being proposed?
Why is this being proposed?
Because why, why did it...
Why did it come up? Did...
Not for a benefit, just trying to...
I thought first was for those H R A and H S A for benefits.
Yes.
The city contributes to that. That money goes to them and if they retire, they're gonna let the people, let it happen.
That's correct, yeah. And they're still part of our Cobra, right?
Well, I don't mind, I think this is, you know, some of y'all don't have. You all have health insurance for retirees now for the city, so that's what you're, we did a round. They pay their, you know, obviously a much higher rate, unfortunately. But that's what this is offering, which is T M L, or T M L has...
Yes.
Or T M L target would offer this coverage, so you have to pay for this. I think it's a benefit for your employees, certainly. Like I said, if you have them pay for it, I think that needs set separately.
Yes.
So it shouldn't affect your loss rate.
No.
Or if it does, it will be directly passed on to those employees each year. So they should not continue.
Is this gonna be something that's going to follow from now or is this gonna be something from the back to the...
Um, from forward, yes, the retiring.
That's what I mean, not clear.
Do we know of anyone who wants to take advantage of this benefit permanently? Because Congress is extensive.
Yeah, sixty, yeah, and sixty-five, they get on.
Right, anyway.
Well, it's good to have Buck Martin healthy, he gets to retire early.
Well, I think you should all, 25 years or... What we have around is, is anybody that's worked 20 years can retire.
Our's is 20, 20.
Is it 20?
So that's standard.
Or if you're over sixty. Mine, you're over sixty, you can retire.
So then that's where this might would come into place, like say if you graduate high school, start working for Ballenger, and then after 20 years you retire, you still have quite a few years left before you can tap into Medicare.
Yes, you'd be over now, if you see the right circle, you'd be on that.
I know, yeah, rates aren't always high for owners, so.
And since the pool of advocates who be older would be able to hire insurance, so it's an option. Honestly, I don't mind people taking a round, I don't have a clue. But, you know, if it doesn't cost us anything, it's just a benefit to all of you.
And have it there.
It can make your rates...
So there's no cost to city, to the city?
Provided it be checked, it says here...
Yes, provided they provide...
By individual power on the city, and it says, you can modify how the city wants to...
Right.
How long will you see our rates?
Yeah, that won't make our rates go up for the rest of the employees?
I don't think so, it's a separate, separate loss pool and their retirement pool. I'm not gonna check on that, I said, I have a...
I thought, because that's not my understanding. I thought it would. It's, it's an effective loss pool for the entire region is how it's looked at and it's looked at by city overall. And if y'all have losses that go up, it will increase everybody's rates.
Well, their T M L has a blending effect, it's kind of a...
Stable.
I can't, I can't say that's, you know, each, each city is, certainly for retirees, it's scaled differently, I think. But again, I think you need to ask them that question.
Okay.
And just clarify on that cost and the loss ratio.
Okay.
I'll make a motion and we, table this extension, help them to extend it.
I'll say it's a double every eight.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, city council may consider discussing or take action approving the resolution for the Jack Grant.
This is a standard resolution, I mean, for the Jack Grant that we're applying for this year. You know, it's just, I guess, saying that you acknowledge that you are applying for the grant. Pretty sure it's in there, it isn't up in there?
What's that?
The resolution.
It is.
Yes, it is.
So.
I just think they might clear that one vehicle would be 19 grand and two vehicles would be 68,668. Yeah.
Our cost.
Our cost. Yes, ma'am.
One is 19, but two is 68.
Right.
But when we went to the grant workshop, they did not have a projected number that the grant was gonna be. So they told us to predict what we got last year, which in case what we got last year was $30,000. So the price of the vehicle slightly going up is the, whatever Buck said, 19.
Yeah, it says here, budget paid 19 grand appreciable. Well, it's really not, it's 19 for the first and then the other one is the full amount.
Yeah, which we might...
We're only getting a grant from one.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Well, I mean, and what we, this...
Or that's what we got last year.
That's what we got last year, we modified it to, we're only getting one and we're only at $12,000, $12,000, $13,000.
And when would you need this?
And what we can do is when we, whenever they do come up and grant us the money, whatever number amount that is, we can look at it and we can knock off a vehicle if we need to.
And when would you need these funds?
These funds will be until next budget year.
Oh, okay.
So we're just approving the resolution for you to move forward with the Jack Grant. That's what you're asking for, so the fund will come out in the next year.
Yes, this will, they won't award the, this grant until October 1st.
Okay, this will be in your 2021 budget?
Yes, it'll be in the 2021.
Okay, so it's 19 for the first vehicle and 68 for the second?
Yes.
But you don't have to take the second.
No, you don't have to take the second.
Do you intend to take the second?
If there, there's another road that we're going down to the U S D A grant that I'm hoping will pay for the second one. So, I mean, the car, the vehicle that I ordered in or anything like that, it's just a base number that I got for quote, for sale. It could vary, the prices could vary since we're still eight months out, so the grant will... But hopefully with the U S D A grant and this grant, hopefully it will give some vehicles to replace our thing. And that's, I mean, the 68, that's a fully equipped vehicle. All we have to do is put a radio in it and equip it, which is a, and drive.
All right, so what we're approving is that we will pay 19, the city would need to budget an income of 19,000 for each vehicle. For the first vehicle. This says for each vehicle.
Remember, if she doesn't read the way the book is reading it out, that's what I'm, that's my question.
Okay, but I can't say right now that I would be okay with paying 68 for another one without seeing next year's budget.
Well, I mean, we can always re-adopt another one if we need to. So that is just part of the grant that we have to go forward with that patient.
I just don't wanna be committed to, if we approve this...
No, I think we, we, this last one, we revisited and replaced what we needed. So they're just saying that whatever other cost comes to it, that will be responsible for it.
So again, it's 19 for the first vehicle, 68 for the second. You do not have to take the second vehicle. And you're also exploring another grant through U S D A to provide monies for that second vehicle?
Yes.
Because you'd like to get it if you can. Because the 68 for the second vehicle, there's, that's not even a grant, that's...
It's just buying a car. What are we gonna look at, cut this thing in half and just go out to the one vehicle right now until they can turn? Do you take a break? Why is the second one so high?
Well, both of them are...
That's just buying a car.
They're like the amount that we protected, that we're gonna get off the first.
I'm pretty sure, I know, we definitely know we need one for us, yeah. Only ask the third.
I, I shoot, I...
Is there a possibility that they could give you a grant for a second?
We'd ask them for nine.
Through the U S...
It's 98.
Was the U S D A grant told, like, that's what I'm trying to make sure that I'm not committing to be...
Hidden on the property level of the city. I guess I had to make sure and see where we're at, but it's either a 75% grant or a 55% grant.
So we're still gonna be out?
We're still be out. That just depends on where we set, I mean, Robert said we were at the 75% mark.
Based on the past grant, we're, we're willing for the 75% grant.
No, we would only be responsible for 25%.
But you're just asking for permission to put the grant in, is all you're doing right now, not to commit to these numbers.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm fine with it.
Because we want, next budget year, we want to explore the whole deal about, you know, at least our vehicles and their price.
So is there any reason, like, I know we had touched on this a little bit last time, but towels are a lot more expensive than towels or something, but is there any... No, they're about the same price. They're about the same price, yes. The only difference with towing, I mean, it was maybe years ago to go to G M due to the fact that there's dealership and warranty work to be done here in town. We don't have to go San Antonio, Abilene, too big to be a little for any warranty work, so.
Charges and junk.
Well, and our roads and your gear. Plus you need the room, if it's the same price, I would rather...
Yeah, I mean, they're roughly around the same price, I mean...
You say roughly, though?
Yeah.
Yeah, roughly being $25,000 difference?
No, not that much. I mean, it's not really a big difference.
But you just want us to approve you to move forward to apply for this grant? That's what we're, okay.
That's all this paper is.
Okay, so.
I'll make that motion to approve you forward with the grant. Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Senator. Okay, city council may discuss, consider, and or take action on this for city-owned real estate. Anytime with a realtor here tonight or not, sir? Well, I know, it would be nice to have the girl. Two realtors, so, bye.
I, I looked at them, there's three offers on the property at 708 North 10th.
This one up there now?
No, this is actually just a little house that we...
So there's three separate offers on the same property?
708 North 10th. And one is for, it was listed at $10,000 was the listing price. One was for $3,500, one was for $6,500, and one was for $9,000. And I kind of did a rough net proceeds on those, not counting any taxes that are owed. And just an approximate net proceeds on the $9,000 offer, we would net about $6,600 minus taxes or whatever is, whatever any other means that might be on the lap, I don't know. The $6,500 would net... The sixty-five hundred would net us about forty-one hundred and the thirty-five hundred would net us about four hundred dollars. So obviously the nine thousand dollar offer is the best one, it was a nice, clean, tight, contracted, needs a couple of tiny revisions on it. Um, but that's the offer that I was looking at.
And that's going through the closing agent?
That's going through the title company, thirty title.
And gives.
Yeah.
And we'll provide title insurance?
Yes. And there are three thousand dollars earnest money, which is good, um, they have zero option period. Um, they're not asking for surveys, they're not asking for home warranties, they're not asking for the city to pay any closing costs. Um, commission on all three deals would be fifteen hundred, um, so it's pretty straightforward. Actually, one of them did ask, the thirty-five hundred dollar one asked for the survey, which the survey will run about seven hundred, but that's a lot. So. More expensive in downtown than some places.
We just have to approve which one of these we will go with?
Yes, and then there's also, um, you wanna touch on the other one? There's another contract that has already closed, um, it's an older contract, it's already executed, closed, um, everything's done. I don't, it doesn't look like they got a file policy or anything, but the Realtor was not paying her commission on that, so we need to, um, vote to pay her her five hundred dollar commission. It was, it was only a fifteen hundred dollar deal, but, um, her minimum commission, I think, was made, was five hundred. I don't know what the agreement was on her commissions, but she did.
She said five hundred a month.
She put five hundred on here, so, but she needs to be paid that. That was the church. Need to get her taken care of. So, um, on the, on the contract itself, the, she did email me the lead base paint of them, which was missing. Um, but I have that in my email that I can send to y'all cause it'll need to be signed. And, um, on seven oh eight, on the address north, please be added to the address. That, that's all I see.
So this one's already done, we just need to approve payment to the Realtor.
Correct.
On the, on the Eleventh Street property. And then the other one would be three different, we get the most amount on the nine thousand dollar offer, so. That's what I don't go with.
Yeah.
We can also agree not to take any of the offers.
We could, we're asking ten and we're giving nine.
Well, I just, somebody said something earlier about deciding which offer, I'm just making sure it's obvious to everybody that you don't have to accept.
And we could counter back too, we could counter, we could accept or decline. But I would.
I would say it does that flow through to the asking.
We definitely are, I mean. Yeah. Yeah.
A little, we don't, is that all together, that two?
No, no, that's a different address that one.
But I spoke to, I think it's I R two, right? I think it's, I think it's I R two, I thought.
Is it? I don't know, um.
I would say that one time while that, I don't know for sure.
On the listing agreement, it, I mean, on the contract that. It doesn't have the two addresses and, and on the listing, on M L S, it doesn't list anything about the other little house, so I don't think that goes with it. I think at one point they sold off the back porch of their lot, probably like a lot of them do around here, and that one faces whatever that size.
Yeah.
Yeah, she faces few.
I think that's a free standing.
Somebody had offered to give that to the city in one house, so they, I don't remember anybody ever actually taking that.
That's all I'm thinking, we, we played that thing that one time. It's not a lot.
The little house, the little house behind it.
I thought we might, we might not.
So do we have a motion to approve paying the Realtor?
I made a motion that we, that we paid the Realtor the five hundred dollars on, um, nine oh eight North, actually maybe South eleven, is it North eleven or South? North. Nine oh eight North eleventh.
Okay, do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor? Aye.
Okay, and then I make a motion that we accept the offer submitted by.
Ron Plumlee?
Brian Plumlee, um, in the amount of nine thousand dollars cash.
All in cash, still, too?
They're all cash, yeah.
Second.
All in favor? Just to let that one here by. Okay, good job.
They've got the church, but very few remember.
Now, it's, it had to be Highway North, wouldn't it?
Rockland, is it?
No, Stan, it was not, no.
No, it's a, it's an empty lot, and there, there was one that built a church on it.
Oh.
Probably, it's right there before the truck department, I forget, and y'all, where the gas main, that empty lot, they're gonna build a church.
That's a little church on the, on the, that's a little bit out there.
Okay, this time the city council will look at building permits and take action and approve or disapprove?
Three, two of them are pretty simple ones, until the, the Allison Development, Building of Fence, I remember they had a fair, so that, she also put a copy that's already in there. I approve that one, and then let's get there. Daniel Sanders is going through Brown Hallmark to build some more storage units where the old car wash used to be, up on Broadway. Uh, I was supposed to go up there with Daniel and text off to mark off setbacks, he's gonna go from the setbacks and build as many seats as he can.
What will those look like, just like the ones that are right there?
Where you tell me, they're gonna, I've been towards that area with the, with the car wash.
Can we paint a mural on them?
The third one is Chad Hardy, he wants to expand his driveway, make it a little wider, he's gonna park his trailer, wanna look at that, that looks good, he's gonna talk to his neighbor. Make sure they're okay with it as well, and he also wants to take up the sidewalk in front of the house.
You're going to go wider towards the fence or towards the house?
Towards the fence.
Sense, yes.
Printing pictures of the sidewalk, you guys will take out, y'all can look at it.
Do you have to get approval to take a sidewalk up on that street?
As far as I'm concerned, the city's, city owns the sidewalk, it's true. I'm trying to help you, but I can find home sidewalks and, and is it?
No longer a sidewalk.
Yes, it's no longer a sidewalk, it's also not in within the city driveway, it's about the middle of our yard.
I say that we let Chad take up the sidewalk if he promises to put another sidewalk close to the street.
Oh, wow.
Uh, we, he's like, I said, already, so.
No one will build it, no one will hardy.
Heard that.
Make a motion that we approve all three?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, there you go, Chad.
And you're still here, you're not looking over yet?
We're gonna keep eye on it.
I've never heard an ex- for a few months.
Thank you, Chad. Okay, city council, may consider or take action to replace the yield signs at North Fifth Street and Field Street with stop signs?
I had a call from a homeowner over there that lives right there, and I think there was a wreck there the other day, I assume this might be helpful, y'all to help me.
This was Fifth Street and Field Street.
That's about the, uh.
We're, we're showing these stop signs there, by the way, the same. I don't know, so do, it's horrible on that room.
That's the block by the Catholic church, I guess it's the block behind.
Well, there's yield signs, I think, on, on Fifth?
On Fifth, there's yield signs, on Sixth, there's yield signs.
But there's not.
There's nothing on that long stretch from Broadway all the way to Third, isn't it where it is?
So you're wanting people to slow down on that road, or just replace the.
This one was wanting to replace the yield signs, people going on Fifth.
I would, I would go the other direction, I would slow down Field.
Okay, I take my life in my hands when I go down any road that has yield signs over here.
I know she's on the edge of what she wants, but I would, I would look at the other direction and see if there's a possibility to do stop signs or yield signs down Field.
Well, that's an awful.
There's a church.
Yeah, I'm actually, I don't know, cause y'all, just put a stop sign by my house and then, then the driveway for years and it's hard for me to remember that, oh yeah, I'm gonna stop there now. And I think it's a lot of people are just used to not stopping, that's causing.
But they'll get used to it.
Well, we did that last one, we advertised, and you put it out there, Chad, we're just, you know, I don't know about your house. You're not told.
So going back where she's talking about, every road has yield in Field, but there's no stop signs.
Right, I mean, I know people blow through all the yield signs.
And I got like seventeen children who play at home.
So we have the four-way stop right there?
It's the church, I honestly, if you were to put one anywhere, you would look at everyone at the church and at that, up there, because it is a church busy intersection, so, I mean, that possibility.
Julie? The, um. You're gonna catch some heat because nothing was ever done on Thirteenth Street where the dent used to be. Um, several wrecks, so you may want, before you go spend the money to change the signs out over there, you may want to consider doing something over there on Thirteenth Street, because it is awful. If, um, where you can't see past that fence, if you just happen, like I did the other day, to come up on that hill, and you just crawl and crawl and crawl. And, and then there's still people coming, I personally think they should get four-way stop sign there. I don't know what the requirements for that are, but because of the fence, it's very dangerous. So before you go doing something on the other side of town, maybe y'all should look at addressing that.
We, we discussed that.
We discussed that leak several times, and we just.
Well, that's supposed to, that is how it resolves it, is all.
We were supposed to paint the curb, we were gonna remove the yield sign, was that what we did, Stan?
All we gotta do is do the fence.
That's my question, is that illegal?
Exactly, it was a big.
Yeah.
This can't, this, where the top, where the top, where the top fence is, that's where it just stopped, when it go down, we blew it.
This came up for collections and transitions and everything else, and so we got kinda pushed a little bit when everything trans, transitioned.
It wasn't an issue on board when people had to slow down for the day.
For the dent.
But people do not have to slow down, and let me tell you.
Well, I do have. Twenty years or twenty-five years of slowing down. So, I guess we all, we need to act on this.
It was, well, okay, we can take action on the. So we can try, but you need to put that on the agenda to address on the next city council meeting for. But also, as far as stop signs here, I used to live on Sixth Street next to Jeff. And people fly up and down Sixth Street with no regard for those yield signs. I would return them in before and I'll burn, I will burn it again, but I'm not there, but people just have no regard. So I'm, what I'm trying to say is that even if you do go the step of putting the stop sign right there, it's probably not gonna matter.
It wouldn't matter if they get a ticket.
But someone's gotta sit there and we don't have the manpower for someone to just sit there, at least not that I personally stand. So, um.
We're all.
Lots of action on this.
What she's asking for and what's on the agenda is to put on where the yield signs are, so do we want to approve or not approve that?
Well, we'll have to take, we're gonna bring it back and do the order thing, so we got basically today, we'll just be deciding what we wanna do, and we'll place on next agenda. I don't know if you, if you can, I don't know, it's like, shoot, you're gonna have training, I mean, you're gonna have to keep doing it, just we have to go down the list and hit every single one of them.
Not against the four-way stop there.
I would be against a four-way stop there.
Well, if you put a four-way on Fifth and Sixth, that's, that, that's your church.
Well, yeah, the church is there, she's a block from the church.
She found her. We both.
And because of the way that the, it curves there, you can't see back behind, and where the people are flying through there, and also the other street beside, um, they just tear through there. But that one right there specifically, it's, it's got like a hill, and you can't see, if someone's flying from the other side, you can't see until they're right up on you. That's not the way the yield sign runs, that's the other.
Right, it's the other grave.
So what do y'all wanna do about this particular item on our agenda, Fifth Street and Field? Y'all wanna take one?
Which is more cost-effective, a stop sign or a speed bump? Which is more effective, a stop sign or a speed bump?
The only thing is, one, I mean, one set of stop signs, that's what we're gonna look at, Ruby? Instead of just going down a road, I'm, I'm stuck on that for some reason, you know, we're just gonna put one stop sign on Fifth. Instead of correctly issuing for all the way down. And the, yeah, four.
Maybe we need to look at some speed bumps.
I'm not sure those, you know, those, um.
They're like these plastic rubber.
A lot, they're nine thousand. Part of them, a piece. A piece of rubber?
That's correct.
That's what it costs, about ninety-eight hundred bucks.
Why can't you just do one on that asphalt?
Yeah, not for your asphalt.
Be good.
That's where they work.
But not that.
You don't want like on every, you want to go slowly. Sign and date and your phone number on it.
Why can't we put a few speed bumps in that area around the church? I don't know, we might look at.
It's just lots, it takes a lot of fuel, makes a lot of asphalt.
We had to call some signs and maybe do pole.
But, the sign, you know, we can use poles to vary, I mean, we already have stop, I mean, for me, it'd be cheaper than the stop sign, it would be.
But it's scary, too.
But it takes a lot of asphalt for a one speed bump, especially when we're built.
And there's still a problem not having a stop sign too.
I built a lot of speed bumps square too, so.
So he made a motion to do a four-way, this one that she can, okay, so he made a motion to do a four-way, I'll say it though. All in favor? I'm just. I, I, I kinda think we need to probably investigate a little bit more, personally.
Same, I, besides speeding complaints, I don't remember accidents being there. Um, like I said, the major intersection that on all the board, I noticed thirteen computer. So, um, I mean, everybody's used to these yield signs, um. I can't, I don't, I don't know, I, I'm decided speeding complaints, that's all we get in that neighborhood.
Tell me.
I'm worried about accidents, I'm worried about kids.
Kids, yeah.
What about reducing the speed a little bit, that neighborhood? It's hard to watch these speed bumps.
It's a marked.
Resolution.
You, you can, you can pay it, but you can reduce the speed on that, but in the city, you just have to pass it a warning.
Well, but you could also just mark that area and reduce that area.
You're supposed to do a study first before you can do a.
Study.
You may wanna look at that whole section right there around the church, it's awful. It lives there for almost twenty years.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
It's a very bad, because of how the roads are offset in one section, and then you can't see like people coming from the park across that hill, and the same style on this side of it, if you're not on that road going to the park.
Well, I can't even make some sense to replace just two, start, and you, I would have to go all the way down if you were to try to do each side. Maybe not four ways, just each side, each thorough, each, each yield sign.
Or around the church itself, a lot of kids and stuff, C C D, or.
The other day, I saw my kids in our little three block area, or one block from Jeff, and they're on their bikes, this is a whole day. The other day, I was coming from the park, after reading about speed bumps, and, um, there was a person unloading their child out of the van on this side and the church is here. So the child jumped out of the van, ran in the van in front of me and crossed over the street. So maybe there's something to be thought about around the church itself, which would also affect that.
I mean, I guess the yield signs are off this street, is, you know, put them, put them off Field.
Could do that.
So that way you can actually put a pause in there on, on Field Street.
It swapped from one side of town to the other. This side of town, you go up, it's all yield, that side of town, you go that way, it's all. Well, but, um.
I'm going to say, just on the south end area, we. I'm going to say, just on the south end area, we, I drive over there a lot. You'll drive down one road and it'd be, go two blocks stop sign, two blocks. And then wherever you have this one, sometimes you have a stop sign coming this direction. So I mean, you always gotta be on the aisle where your stop signs are. Cause you may go two blocks, hit a stop sign, two blocks, hit a stop sign, and that slows you down a lot.
Just have to be on your toes about it. So what do y'all wanna do? You're a capable investigator, you wanna move. You made a motion and you seconded.
No, that's Christian.
Yeah, so do you need to retract here so that we can maybe do a little research and explore that area better in the next, before the next meeting?
I could.
You wanna, you think we should go ahead and do that?
It would be, I think it would be, I mean.
I don't think it'll hurt to put them there. And we could always move those yield signs and use them somewhere else.
We also move all four corners of the church too.
We could do the four corners of the church.
Four-way on the side of East.
So I, I, I think we'll, I'll stick with the, the four-way for this intersection, but I think maybe the next meeting, we also need to look at the surrounding areas and see if there are other places that might need. But not a lot to type up the.
We're gonna have a stop sign where?
Four-way stop, four-way stop is what you motioned, right? Um, at Field and Fifth.
I think, I think look at there one building, six, they're gonna do that.
We'll look at that at the next.
Okay, we'll have to look at that at the next.
Is that Field?
Field Street.
Is there a difference?
North, no, there's only one field. It's North Fifth Street and Field Street. Four-way stop. And then we'll assess the other areas here, put down the next decision.
Okay, so we had a motion for Ryan, seconded by Christie. For the four-way at Field Street and Fifth. All in favor?
Bye.
Your recommendation.
I know you voted me, but then we kept on discussing it, so, okay. But, but it, it passed, motion passed?
Right now, do we only, we have just two yield signs?
Yes.
So we'll be adding four stop signs, replacing two of the yield signs.
Correct.
Okay, motion passed.
That would be. I think one of those staples buttons.
Okay, now, um, our, and our city manager will go over accounts payable, H U reports and financial statements.
I thought we moved the fourth.
Um, yeah, we gotta do the.
Oh, 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 yes, we did move stuff, I'm sorry, that was my bad.
I just wanted a little explanation on it.
What do we get? What's the total we receive?
Do we?
It's not in the budget, so why are we doing it right now? Why are we wanting to do it?
Because, because we need gear and because uh, we need airbags and.
And we need them when the budget was done too, though?
No, usually, usually we use by ourselves, we don't even bring them to y'all. But because of what has been fired and now what we're doing, what Buck wants to do, this is how we're gonna do it. Uh, we have to have gear for our guys, you know? We, either way, we're gonna have that gear because they can't go to fire school. Cause gear is over ten years old and they have a plus two, they give you two extra years. And that's pretty much gone. And so we are on the, our gear is. Yeah, thirteen years. So they're not gonna allow those people to go to fire school. So we need to get gear. We have been buying gear this way forever and ever and ever. But here, they're, they're not in the budget, unfortunately, it's not in the budget this year because.
Yes, it was.
I lied when we budgeted.
During the budget time, I told y'all that we would do a structural gear under the forfeiture grant because it was way more expensive gear and.
We approved three places.
We oughta buy some turnout gear. You know, that was part of the deal with the fire truck, the payments on the fire truck. It was only, I don't, I'm going to remember, I don't remember. It was three thousand, it was the twenty-seven thousand was the payment, I believe, for the aerial and the remainder of it. And then I added another guy to.
So that's in there.
How much are we gonna get? At least, how much, what is the total for the grant?
The total for the grant is for this, for the, is twenty thirty-five thousand dollars.
And it's costing us thirty-seven fifty.
Thirty-seven fifty for, yes, that one, for that one.
We gotta put the other one on the next run.
So it, the seventy-five is thirty-seven fifty. So that's what we're asking you to do to that.
And we get this one or was it?
The two S C B As that are on there?
That's the one we're calling.
Or the next one?
No.
Okay, so the two S C B As that are on there, that is, that, we're using a grant for that because that is required for your faith firefighters.
Right.
And if we can use a grant to do that instead of having to come out of the city side of things because it has to be done regardless, then we, that's what we're trying to use a grant to get things that are required, especially things that are not expensive. So.
An airbag now costs, back in the day, they were five thousand dollars. When we first got this round in our gear, they were five thousand dollars. They are now upwards to ten to eleven thousand dollars. Now it's over nine thousand dollars.
And that's not for things.
No, that's, that's fair.
Can we sell some of the old ones to?
Yeah, you're not gonna get very much for them.
It's a violation.
They're not gonna, they're, they have to be refurbished and all that stuff and then they, you send them to somebody else, you're not gonna get much for them. Cause they'll have to refurbish them all and then they sell them for a thousand dollars. They're not, they're not compliant though, that's the problem.
Yeah, no, I just think it.
You're probably, you're probably not gonna get five hundred dollars for a piece of them. We got tons of them sitting at the station here. Nobody wants.
With the old ones, it probably.
I know this is gonna sound crass, but I know there's some few of them that would probably, could use them. I mean, like.
No, I have these, but I mean, they, that's, that's, but they're not gonna buy them. One more dollar, I'll never.
Okay, so right now, you want us to approve the thirty-seven hundred, thirty-seven fifty?
Yes, that would be fire and rescue equipment, eighteen thousand, two hundred and forty dollars. That's, that is a seventy-five percent grant. So we're, that's where we're responsible for twenty-five percent.
And, and it's.
That's thirty-seven, thirty-seven fifty.
And they're the requirement?
It would just be on the trucks, these would be in his vehicle. This would replace.
Well, one will be on, on a truck and one will be in my vehicle. That's how we're gonna manage.
He thought it wasn't when he created the item, but Rick says it is. So I need to research it.
So it may be, but I, I know we put some in there for equipment, but I, and we were gonna do a little. But I don't remember all the details. I just wanna make sure that when we're doing the budget, we think ahead.
Well, we will, this is just full cost. Full cost. We have, we wasn't a whole lot.
This is crazy.
That was the one that for tuition, tuition grant. We paid, we paid the money up front and then they reimburse you the whole time.
Okay, so we're, we're looking at seventy-five percent grant, how it costs, be thirty-seven fifty and this is for six.
No, this is for two airbags.
Two airbags.
So we will bring the next one back.
I make a motion that we approve the grant. The grant needed for structural firefighting. At the cost of thirty-seven fifty, our portion. All in favor? We have one missing. Okay, motion carries. Now, we will hear from our city managers. Their reports.
Citizens, mayor, council, um, the state of Ballinger's finances is pretty good. Uh, we've now funded bonds completely. If you look in your H U accounts receivable, um, Republic is just another one month payment. We chopped Republic up, got the bonds sitting there ready to pay in the savings account. And, um, we're catching up slowly. And, uh, well, it's pretty fast, really. Um, we've traded out a bunch of equipment, out there. And running down. Got a new.
We got rid of the old, the dozer blade in the room. Ended up getting back that. We got another, we got another dozer back, we got another blade back. We ended up getting a big fifteen yard dozer, a seven yard dozer. And we'll pick up a pair.
And we're able, we hope, to keep the trash home. Cause we need it to squish houses. Lots of houses.
We've been repairing it after years, it doesn't quickly heal. I found one, two parts of one, and go pick it up. Why I had to have a haul there, it's easy haul, others up there equipped.
We got rid of the dunn, dunn. And we have other prospects, depending on what the county's gonna do.
I found a guy who was by our old truck too. Both of them actually, whether they're on the same car.
So we're transitioning out equipment that didn't match our needs. So we're, no additional cost to us, that's correct.
They're all paid for.
Well, excavator.
Except the excavator.
Excavators not paid for, but we're caught up.
And possibly a roller, yeah, we're caught up on the excavator. We had to get caught up on these, they're fast. So anyway, we're moving on surplus. Yes, um, half and half.
Well, we got rid of three pieces, we had five, six left.
Yes, sir.
So the idea of getting rid of equipment originally was to net some income, to pay down, how much did we end up netting?
Right now, it's approximately a hundred. Just equipment, those two dollars for what she was here. The light was too big, go down the alleys.
We bought older equipment, we bought it back, but it's equipment that we can work on here, we don't have to call outside people to come work. Yeah, I understand, I just wanted to know what the number was that we ended up.
About a hundred, a hundred thousand. About a hundred grand. We have some more pieces to sell, but we also have to go get a roller somewhere. And you can't have mine. Okay, uh, what else? What I've done on these reports is I just dumped what was in the machine, okay? So what strikes me as to what needs to happen in the future is Chad needs his own department. And let's call it planning, city planning, uh, floodplain manager.
I T.
I T, no, not I T. I T, hands-on I T.
I T assistant.
One more thing, I mean, yeah, public enforcement. But he needs his own department. And it depends on what you guys wanna do. A lot of cities put the trash in, uh, the general fund. I would like to move it to, uh, the for-profit fund too, which is water, wastewater or have its own fund. It's a for-profit operation, it's not part of city government. Government just spends money, they don't, they don't really earn. I wanna see what we're earning and what the net is. And it, it makes the, the overall government-wise statements a whole lot cleaner when you have, um, the types of entities et cetera, okay? The for-profit need to be over here and the government operations need to be over here. Government operations have their income below, uh, below the, all the expenses. I mean, they're really totally different animals because all you're doing is taxing, taxing the citizens enough to pay for what you have to do. So it's a different animal. So another thing that I looked at and saw that I need to change, that I would change, is, uh, going to, um, Chad's new department, if we get it, all this has to occur during the budget operation because it's totally new. And he'll have to be pulled from other areas. So that needs to be changed. One of the things that I noticed was the budget for, uh, Republic's cost was at three ninety. And the, the current bills are coming in at forty-one thousand a piece. Which is four hundred ninety-two thousand, which means we under budgeted the expense by one hundred. So what that does is it throws, uh, your budget off. Yes, sir?
Prior to most of y'all being on here, but for Rick, Bonita and Christie, did we ever get Republic, did we ever get any refund from Republic? Because it's my understanding they were working on, you know, everything other didn't refund.
Oh, they, they, they turned that over to us and I'm gonna have to do that. They're not, and we don't want.
So they, they, so.
But the thing is, we don't want them watching their own work.
So there could be more, there could be more being made there.
There could be because you guys busted thirty-two, we're paying forty-one. And they said, hey, we're just paying all our last, uh, loads right now. They want us to audit it. I just haven't the time. So.
Didn't they get sued a few years ago and we got some reimbursement for that or am I mistaken?
No, they've been taking the task on other towns, yeah.
Would it reduce the load if Ballinger, there are like some other towns like Robert Lee and Braun, where they have trash, uh, trash cans consolidated in one area instead of having them spread out through Ballinger and kind of, kind of like, uh, lessen the amount of trash cans? I, I pay four hundred and some dollars a month for trash, sewer and water, and I don't use a whole lot of water and I don't use a whole lot, I, I, I don't use a whole lot of, uh, sewer. So a lot of my expenses is trash cans and I threw them behind my business. So would it not be prudent or maybe a little bit more cost-effective if you had one area like we used to have behind the, the city where they had like eight or four or five trash cans where you could just drop your trash off?
You'd have to look at that and ask them. Right now, you've got the best trash service in the state, my opinion. Cause you've got the cans that everybody wants, you're not pushing little plastic things to the, to the curb. And you're not having to consolidate into one area. Uh, elderly folks don't have to walk a long miles to do it, they just walk in. Sorry, no, I didn't, I just wanted to, we have to look at it, answer your question, we have to look at it and ask them. I think it might be cost-effective, but I feel like you said, with our size and the efficiency of what we're turning the payments, it works. The additional feed, the additional water, you're doing, you've got the best. We're gonna play, fix it out. You should go behind my building, it's horrible. Fix it out just now.
Yeah, but I mean, I mean, I didn't know if that would make, I didn't think it would make any reduction in price if you were to reduce the amount but have like a, a couple of consolidated areas in neighborhoods where you, people can drop them off a little bit more.
We'd have to ask them, I don't know. And that's it? Three ninety and it's coming, the current bills is coming in at four ninety-two or something like that, about thirty-two thousand dollars.
Just, just, I don't know, just to not mention the little snafu with the whole water bill and what have you, what were you paying about? The, uh, what, what was disconcerting is that it's, it's gonna be a smaller time this time.
Yes.
But how is that gonna affect the standard amount used? I don't even know what that is, I don't use too much, but a lot of people don't.
That's correct.
I mean, how, how is that gonna affect?
What we tried to do is deal with them on a case-by-case basis. So if it bumped them up with a maximum because we had forty-one days instead of thirty, we gave them whatever amount, standard amount that they were over. They were over three thousand and. They were over three thousand and they went to four, I think it's every thousand, seven dollars and something. So we refunded them that amount. Uh, but they just were red, so they're gonna have a smaller amount this year, this month.
Right.
So, that's how it was affected. And you can't alter that time. I mean, when he reads them is when he reads them. It's a, it's a dump system, it just dumps what's in there when he goes around to read them. And he didn't get to it until later because we're having trouble with software and new folks.
Right. What about the issue that, um, there were people who were over their maximum, even with the extra time, but their bill is exactly the same? Anybody gonna look into that? Because they're not gonna report it, but it happens, so...
Honestly, I don't know if we can get to that. We're, we're trying to do our best and get the people trying to get it operating and functioning properly to audit those bills. We need to audit the bills every single time they go out.
Yeah. Well, I don't know if it's the bills or the way it's monitored, you know, years ago. And I mean, years ago, there was a time when the school wasn't paying for any water because it wasn't getting turned in and nobody caught it. And that's a lot of money that didn't get collected. And it's, it's all been straightened out now. So maybe it's possible that that is happening in other sections and, um, you know, if it was me, I would use more here and more here and I knew I was, and I was watering my dress and all of a sudden, my bill didn't change. I'm, I'm not gonna say it, but I might, you know, come up here and say, hey, I owe you more money, but...
So far, all we're responding to are the people that want its money off. Nobody came in and said, add more. They might...
You said duly.
Yeah.
I didn't say that, okay? Mine's enough, I own my little children and they're hour-long showers, they change, okay?
Yeah, we're gonna...
I, I will give kudos to all of the ladies that work here and gentlemen. They have been working, they're hiding soft, trying to learn that software, learn that program and get everything done properly. And they're coming in the morning at seven for another training. Um, so they're working, they're working a lot and they're, they're diligently working to learn all of that so that we can provide the citizens with the best service possible. Right. Okay, so you're finished?
Yes, ma'am.
That was short and sweet, does anybody have any questions? Done.
So Miles just hired, uh, the city of Brownwood code enforcement, mechanical code enforcement to, uh, enforce permits over in Miles. Coleman uses Brownwood. Do you think Bounderage, I agree, gets a point for, we started enforcing mechanical code here? Because I was told by one previous administrator that it was infringement upon people's civil rights to have their house inspected if it's a mechanical inspection. And I thought, well, that's worse. But yeah, we, we have permits for garages, carports, um, storage containers, uh, bin bins, you know, maybe Bounderage gets a point of having mechanical inspection to bring a little bit of revenue in that way also.
That's up to them. It's up to the city, the third party of, of mechanical inspector, you know what?
Yes, I do, his name is Sonny from Brownwood, he's very, very, very hard. He is very tough. He, he goes by the letter of the law, with the energy code, electrical code, plumbing code, air conditioning code, international mechanical code, um, it's, it's, it's crazy the code books he pulls out on you. He's adopted on him.
He retired from Brownwood.
I heard, I'm not happy about that, but yeah, he's retiring.
That's not a question. So are you asking, would this be put on the agenda?
I think it'd be a great idea to have mechanical code.
So we can put it on the agenda to discuss on their city council meeting?
Yes.
Okay. I make a motion at the adjourn?
Sir.
All in favor? Thank you, we're coming out, guys. Y'all have a great evening.